Okay. Wuju Anin Menogeseb. Welcome, everybody, to the tribal council meeting here, April 3, 2024. With the starting the meeting, I would like to call this meeting to order at 9:03 a.m. And invocation. And I don't believe Vern is here today, so we'll do a moment of silence for invocation. Shee Magwich, thank you, everybody. Next, we'll have roll call, please. Here.
Eric Gishik.
Here.
Travis Morrison.
Here.
Andrew Drift.
Robert Moore.
Here.
See, we don't have a microphone.
These things, those things are, they pick up everything, yep. Our other microphones are in, million, so seeing different microphones this morning. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Any additions, corrections? If not, a call for a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have approval of the meeting minutes. We have February 7, 2024. Do you want to do them all in one, or do you want to do them separately?
Please.
Okay. Any questions or corrections on the February 7, 2024 meeting minutes?
I do have a correction. I wasn't... Let me find it real quick.
Okay, that's fine.
It's hard to mark anything in the iPad. I apologize, but I know it's, it's in where it says approval, but it should be disapproval of one of the candidates.
Oh!
It's, um...
Hang on, I'll kind of...
Because the vote is all disapproved, and then the last sentence says approved.
Oh, okay, I see it. It's under the last paragraph on page three of four.
Here we go.
The last sentence, that approved should be disapproved, correct, Tara?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so we'll need to note that in the minutes, that wording on that page three, last paragraph, last sentence should be, is disapproved for certification.
See, Shane ain't the only eagle eye.
Yep, another eagle eye here, good job. Okay, if that's all we have, then do we have a motion to approve the February 7 meeting minutes?
Just, I know you said, it says motion to approve or disapprove, but then it goes by you guys to list what you guys said.
But it says he's approved for certification.
Oh, okay, I see where.
Yeah.
The last sentence.
Yeah, the last sentence, okay. Motion to approve the February 7, 2024 meeting minutes with that correction. Moved by Robert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Next meeting minutes are February 15, 2024. Any questions or corrections on the February 15, 2024?
Well, just to let the band members know that this meeting was just basically for the, regarding the election board and the election stuff, so.
Okay, thank you, Shane, Magwich. It was to a point, yep. If no corrections or changes, I'll make call for a motion to approve the February 15, 2024 meeting minutes. Moved by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Next, we have the meeting minutes of a special meeting on March 5, and this is regarding replacing a member on the general election board due to someone not being able to carry out the duties. Any questions or comments on that one?
Just to point out that Kathy was on medical leave, and we tried to contact Travis, we couldn't get a hold of him, so per Jeff, John?
Yes.
Yep, I'm here.
Jeff, if you could explain why we did what we did for that meeting when Travis wasn't there and Kathy was on leave?
Sure, yeah, if I remember correctly, the, you know, the bylaws require a quorum of three, so we had three present for a meeting, so, you know, the RTC can take action with three as a quorum. There's some notice requirements in the bylaws about how to call meetings, one of which is a signed order by three members, or a certified order by three members, and we talked about, you know, the, these minutes being, and the presence of the three members being, you know, sufficiently interpreted as an, as a signed order to be able to call the meeting, and so, so, you know, my advice was to proceed to make sure that, you know, you guys could take action on the election board. Does that answer your question, Shane?
So, the reason why I asked Jeff to explain is that, is that so that there can't be any misconceptions of what this meeting, that meeting was about, to be transparent, that it was not a scold every meeting or anything, it was just stuff to get done for the election board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, thank you. Go ahead, Tara.
Was the February 15, that's the one we're talking about?
No, we already approved that.
Sorry.
We're on the March 5.
That was the one out in DC, right, when I was in DC? Was it? Wait, no, no, that was the one upstairs. The previous one was DC, okay. Just trying to, we had several of them.
So, yeah. So, I'm just confused, anyway.
Got it.
Okay, got it, Tara?
Yep.
Okay. So, do we, do we have a motion to approve the March 5, 2024 meeting minutes?
Moved.
Moved by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, which I will read. Approved sole source in agreement with Saint... With Louis, Louise Isham, it should be. For transit website, 2-20-22-4-0-0. Hold on, we got some feedback. Approved FY24 impact aid waiver, ISD 707, and authorizing Kathy to sign, 4-0-0. Approved contract for services to Portages Health LLC, 4-0-0. Approved estimate slash agreement Fortune Bay Elder Expo Event, $4,043.60, 4-0-0. Approved proposal to innovative for court clerk desk in the amount of $6,975.85. Approved 2024 Boys' Fort netting code. Approved letter to BIA request for technical assistance, end-of-year funds, FY2024 for audits, 4-0-0. Approved estimate and sole source request for JM Auto Services for $9,692.65, 4-0-0. I don't know how to say that, but approved estimate agreement with Coto Paxy for gym bags at Healthy Teen Conference, $9,228.27, 4-0-0. Approved to extend conservation committee members' terms to 2026, 4-0-0. Approved sole source to Adobe for license renewal, $13,200, 4-0-0. Approved sole source to Fortune Bay for State of the Band Event, 2024, $16,140.30. Approved six new 105L leases and authorizing Kathy to sign for HHS, 3-0-0. Approved letter request for renewal of six 105L lease FY2024, 3-0-0. Approved RFP for GAZB statement 87 compliance services of government tribal leases, 3-0-0. Approved contract with Fro Brothers Drilling IP explanatory well drilling, 3-0-0. Approved quote and sole source request to custom theaters courtroom video conferencing equipment, $14,192.46, 4-0-0. Approved the following donation committee recommendations, Anoka Hennepin School District, $300, Northwoods Archery, $500... Oh, my goodness, this is a long one. Or Fire Department, $500, 4-0-0. Minochi Gang Team request for bunny basket raffle and RTC donation egg hunt, 4-0-0. Approved Resolution 6224 Equipment Financing Agreement with Bankers Bank Community Leasing Service Incorporated for Equipment to the Wilderness, 4-0-0. Approved ISC with Northland Metal Exteriors for New Police, for Net Lake Police Roof, New Roof, 4-0-0. Approved additional payment to StanTech for dam project, $15,945.71, 4-0-0. Approved updated ISC with Northland Metal Exteriors for Net Lake Police New Roof, half of the, it says half, 4-0-0. Approved Resolution Number 64-2024, 2024 per capita garnishment policy, 4-0-0. Approved sole source request to OSC investment for full court annual software payment, 4-0-0. Approved policy for the Boys' Fort Dental Clinic, patient not eligible for IHS-funded healthcare services, last-minute cancellation, failed and no-show, 4-0-0. Approved contract slash agreement DSGW Vermillion Head Start Renovations, 4-0-0. Approved lease agreement between Head Start and ISD 707 for the 2024 and 2025 years, 4-0-0. Approved letter to the project team LLC to terminate contract, 4-0-0. Approved Resolution Number 652024 Mutual Aid Agreement between the BIA and St. Louis County, this is for law enforcement, 4-0-0. Approved Resolution Number 66-2024 ARPA Agreement Valid Construction Services for the Heritage Center Renovations, 4-0-0. Fire donation to Gordon Adams Family, 4-0-0. And that is the lengthy consent agenda.
Yes, I got quite a few.
Go ahead, Shane.
First one to address is the letter C, approved contract for services for Portages Health. And in the poll, I stated that I approve so long that the tribe doesn't lose any employees and/or grants. That would be regarding indirect costs that that comes to the tribe, but I'd also like to see a report on how many band members they serve and revenue they generated for the Health and Human Services.
And I think to kind of go a little further with that, Shane, the contract for services for Portages Health LLC is for mental health services with providers, and basically, they did offer, when Shane mentioned physicians or whatever, that they did offer physicians to some of the contractors, and we will have still our other physicians available, and then reporting, kind of, let's say, not recent, but consistent reporting with regards to the revenue and services, because it sounds like we'll be reaching out in the Virginia office at the Plesha Building, but that has to be renovated due to some asbestos issues and whatever, but also extending services out to the urban offices as well, so that's a huge contract, so, yeah, it's good to have reporting requirements with that. Go ahead, sir.
Going down to letter T, where we approved the resolution, Bankers Bank Community Leasing Services for the Wilderness, and in the poll, I said I approve so long as the Wilderness has it in their budget, and that this doesn't change in any way, shape, or form. The dollar amount was $152,163.84 for 60 months, with a, if I'm reading that correctly, $1 buyout at a rate of 9.95%. Topsum payment, $3,200, $203, $300 doc fee. Just want to point that out.
Okay, thank you. Magwich.
Skipping down to... Additional payment to Senec in the amount of $15,945.71 dam project. I said I'd like for Chris Holm, the DNR director, to give an update at the next council meeting regarding the dam and expenditures.
Okay.
And I know he's not here today, but if you could do that next time, that'd be great. And then if we skip down to... Letter X, this is about the per capita garnishments. And the band members that will be having their per capita checks garnished should be informed well in advance, so that he or she can dispute the garnishment with his or her documentation. So that, I'd hate to see where our band members have their per capita checks garnished, and they find out that the accounting department was in error.
Yep. Yeah, this garnishment policy is, has been not put in place for, for various reasons, like for example, the COVID, and then also because of the high cost of inflation and everything else from the last time. So now, the accounting department will be moving forward with contacting individuals regarding their accounts, and there is a dispute process in there, if they dispute their accounts, whether it be with housing, water, and sand, or whatever they may be contacted about from the accounting department, and then there is a, because we had repayment, we had payment agreements for others, that we are just starting fresh with new repayment agreements, because it's been so long since we had those repayment agreements. So, we will be implementing garnishment of per capita's for this fiscal year, which would be in August, so band members, once you hear from accounting regarding any accounts, please contact them if you have any disputes, or also if you want to arrange payback agreements or whatever, so just giving you guys the heads up on that. Thank you, Shane, for bringing that up, and...
And on the per capita payments itself, this is the second year that we're going to be getting that increase, whatever it may be, and then we're talking with Governor Walz, with Governor Walz as counsel, is that this, the increase is not permanent, it's not in this session, but it's going to be in next year's session, 2025, and hopefully we can get it to be permanent, just to make an order of that. And then moving down, we're talking about the approved policy for the dental clinic.
Okay. C.
Okay, I said I approve so long as this policy applies fairly neatly across the board, regardless of who the person is, and also that the Health Department should be sending out a letter informing the band member, they are in danger of becoming ineligible for services if they keep not calling in or not showing up for the appointments.
And I think that's a, that's a huge point there, is that communication of this policy needs to be extended to the patients that access the dental clinic. I know that, I think it's kind of a, been a longstanding issue with the dental clinic, where people set up appointments, and then for some reason, they do not show up or do not call and cancel, and that, it's kind of hard to get patients in right away, so I know that they're trying to address that, so we'll see how that goes.
And then my last one is letter AA, through contract agreement with DSGW for the Vermillion Head Start. In the poll, I asked if any issues, problems arise because of design, how long is DG or the construction, the, I forget, for how long are they responsible for, for it? And I think that we, I'd like to have an answer on that.
Jeff?
Yeah, Shane, I'll take a look at the master agreement that the band negotiated with DSGW, it would, and that was a couple of years ago now, so it would go back to the provisions of that agreement, the governing law that applies, and whether there was any statute limitations specified in there, so I don't have that in front of me right now, but I'll certainly take a look and get back with the council on that question.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments on the consent agenda?
I have just a few.
Okay, go ahead, Tara.
The one on the per capita, I also commented on that, as well as Shane. To garnish the 2024 per capita, I did question the capacity to handle the disputes. There may be more than usual.
Yep.
And then I said, will that be a separate or outside firm handling the disputes? Are we going to handle that internally, or are we going to hire additional staff to do that? Are the dates set in stone? Apparently, they are. I said at the last meeting about garnishments, accounting billing needs to be absolutely accurate, so we don't garnish what we shouldn't have. In turn, later, reimbursing that account holder, I don't want RTC to turn around and have to do that, so that's why I want that as accurate as possible. I know there's an assurance, a dispute option, but in my mind, the dispute option, moving forward, when we know that... That it's not complete and totally accurate, we're going to have disputes, and we're going to have more. So, just having the dispute option, I feel, is not assurance enough. We need to get those completely accurate, and that's why I think we need to hire additional capacity to help with that. But we don't have that in the works right now. So, that's what worries me, is that we're going to garnish somebody who we don't need to. The reason I'm saying that is because I have a personal, the account that I have, there's ongoing discussions about it. When I was terminated back in 2021, didn't have an income, I was eligible for services for that, what was it, housing rental assistance or something? And I calculated all of my, all of my accounts, and I paid what I could after I got a job a year later, nine months later. And that amount from the, from the help that I got from the housing rental assistance and miscellaneous other things, wasn't applied, and I'm, keep bugging them, I don't want anybody to fall into that, that problem. It wasn't applied, we go to garnish, and then we have to give money back, you know?
Right, right.
With egg on our face, I'll just say. So, I'm trying to get that straightened out, so that doesn't happen, and if it's happening to me, you know, it could happen to anyone, so I just want to make sure that we have that accurate. Thank you.
Okay. Is that all you had, Tara? Okay. All right, Jeff, no other comments on the consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve? Oh, no. Chris Holm? Do you want Chris to do a report now, or? Okay, Chris, we're going to ask you to do a follow-up on the dam project for the next RTC meeting with regards to expenditures, and report on the dam. Just an FYI. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, silent, motion carried.
And one quick, one more comment.
Okay.
There are 32 agenda items on this RTC meeting, and I don't think that should be happening. I have asked the executive assistants to look up and find the resolution where polls were, where consent agenda and polls were introduced, so that the council has that history of why polls happen. From what I can recall or remember is, that was when we didn't have technology.
Yeah.
You know, so, so that provision needed to happen for polls. We have technology now. We can communicate a little faster than we did back in the day, so this consent agenda should, should not be, you know, happening. I think these need to be in the regular session, where we can ask questions and, you know, form our, form our questions and get them answered accurately, rather than throwing them on a, on a poll.
Okay.
I don't like the idea of 32 polls on a consent agenda. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have, and I hope I say this name right, Kaiza Bestman? Resolution Number 68, 2024 Tier 3 Recommendation Support.
What's that resolution?
I don't have the resolution.
But it's similar to the other ones that we've done. She's online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Can you see me? Do you want to see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Buju Anin Indigenakas Keisha. I'm at Masabi East School up in Aurora, and I work as a Indian Ed Coordinator, and I have been there since 2017. I'm the only worker there who works with our native students. We have 66 kids and a bunch of enrolled members at Boys' Fort. I'm looking at help with a Tier 3 licensure. I've been taking classes at Fond du Lac Community College, and I will have my certificate with Anishinaabe language. Michelle Goose has been my teacher, and I've, right now, we are a consortium with 2142 School District, but we are breaking away from that, because we've had some problems, so we're going to be our own district and not work with 2142 anymore, so we are going to need to find someone who can teach Anishinaabe language. I'm not a professional, but I'm looking at helping our students for the while, until even, hopefully, one of my students, I've been pushing them to go to school at Fond du Lac and get their certification, and, so I'm just looking at help with that, and I'm wondering if I can ask you for help. I have a letter of recommendation from my APAC team, and if I need to get anything else for you guys, I sure will.
Magwich Keisha, sorry, I didn't say your name correctly, I wasn't sure how to say that. I wasn't sure how to say that, but thank you for the information. And I know that we've had other requests come in for regards for licensure because, you know, we are looking for individuals to teach the Anishinaabe language within our school districts and what have you. I know we just did one for one of the Palmer girls.
Stacy.
Stacy, yes, yes, thank you. And so if you could send us your documentation, your letter of recommendation, and maybe a letter of request, and then then we can go from there. And go ahead, council, do you want to approve that today? Do you want to see the documentation first or? Okay, if once you send the documentation, we will take a look at it and we'll get back to you as soon as we can with regards to the Tier 3 recommendations.
I sure will.
Me Gwich.
Gwich.
Okay, next we have Renika Love.
Do we move to table one or do we?
Yeah, we don't have the resolution yet, so.
Because it's an actual agenda item.
Let's move to table that, and then once we receive your information, we'll act on it at the next meeting.
I'll move to table 7A, Keisha Besman.
Okay. Second by Shane, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, silent, motion carried. So that gives you a couple of weeks, Keisha. Okay, next we have Renika Love with a request for support and partnership for focus groups for Minnesota Indigenous paths to parenthood. Oh, Renika's not on yet, okay. We'll move to Pam Parsons with the monthly compliance update. Morning, Pam.
Morning, everybody.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so the monthly compliance report, I don't have a whole heck of a lot right now. We will be doing, we'll be needing to get a sole source for MedTrainer, and that's our learning management system. And that's working well. That will come due at the end of May. So I have to get that done. Currently, I'm working on, I also have to do my HIPAA recertification training, and that's going to be coming up too. So I have to get my registration in for that. Top three issues again we're working on is cybersecurity is really, really important right now. Working with Randy because, of course, Randy deals with the whole tribal government and then how we're going to fit into that cybersecurity. So working closely with Randy on that. I'm also working on the work plan for our security risk assessment. And what I do is after the risk assessment's done, I look at the areas of concern. And I try to put in different action plans of things I can be working towards. One of the things I'm going to work on this year is going to be more of the audits and making sure that I have really good audits and audit results in our compliance binder. We do have to get together with regularly scheduled meetings. Our compliance committee has been going through policies. We do have an updated code of conduct that I need to get tribal council to approve. Not sure exactly how we're going to do that, but I'll talk to Dan and get that rolling. Otherwise, that's about it. Again, the fingerprint background checks are getting done, so I'm very pleased about that. Thank you very much for getting that done. So really, the next thing is trying to get some regularly scheduled meetings together so I can go over some of the compliance needs that we have without having to go into a regular RTC meeting. I'm hoping that we can, you know, set up some healthcare meetings.
Pam, would you like?
Any questions?
Yeah, Pam, would you like to have, like, regularly scheduled monthly meetings or bi-weekly meetings? Or, because we can get that put on our schedules automatically.
Yeah, monthly meetings would be really great. And then just so I can start documenting that we actually are having healthcare board meetings for the health board.
Okay.
Yep, so that would really help me with getting that documentation I need and then to get some of the stuff that's kind of been sitting there approved and done so council knows everything that's going on with compliance.
Okay.
So that would be great.
Okay, so Nikki and Regina, if you can contact Pam to get that on our schedules once a month, that'd be great.
All right.
Pam.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Tara. We already discussed this, didn't we? We were supposed to meet at, you know, at your office, the council member. We talked about this already several, several times.
Tara, sometimes the ball gets dropped, and that's, I'm trying to pick that ball up and. So yeah, we did discuss it, we said we would do this, but we really haven't done it. So we just need to get it scheduled and start doing it.
You know, what might be a good time too is because we have our RTC meetings set, the first and third Wednesdays, is maybe set that meeting up because we're all here in the afternoons or, you know, later in the afternoon, depending on how long the meeting goes. So just something that, that's standing that where we won't, you know. We'll get it, we'll get, we'll pick that ball back up, Pam, okay?
All right, thank you, that'd be great.
Me Gwich.
Thanks, Tara.
Good work.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay, next we have Christine Lundamo and Sarah Howe.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got the Minnesota Great Start Compensation Support Payments.
Yes. So the Boysport Head Start is planning to participate in the Great Head Start Compensation Support Payment Program. It is a state initiative in Minnesota aimed at supporting the childcare industry and its workers. This program will provide monthly payments eligible to childcare providers to enhance compensation and benefits for early childhood educators. To qualify, the providers must meet specific criteria, including holding a valid license or certification, being in good standing and actively operating, and meeting the minimum service thresholds and maintain good record-keeping. A Head Start employee is eligible for additional compensation, including those who regularly care for children. Volunteers and occasional providers such as management are not eligible. The compensation is calculated based on hours actively spent with children, excluding time for sick leave, annual leave, funeral leave, RTCE, and non-supervisory time. The compensation amounts will be determined by the Boysport or by the Minnesota Department of Education, not by Boysport. Payments will be processed by Boysport payroll at the end of the month following the application of submission, allowing time for the Head Start Director to submit the application and for us to receive the payment before distributing to staff. So if the payment is received for March, they'll get paid at the end of May. The Head Start Director, Christine, is responsible for submitting the payment application to the Minnesota Department of Education, including the relevant information for eligible staff members actively supervising children. The program policies will undergo periodic reviews and updates to ensure compliance with regulations to enhance the program's efficiency. And it is important to note that the program, that the participation in the program doesn't guarantee that each person will be compensated every time.
Okay. Well, I believe this is a great support program for our Head Start staff. And it's, was signed into law by Governor Walz in May of 2023. So the funding comes actually from the state and not from other grants that Head Start has. But I know that this is to support the childcare workers and industry because childcare is a huge issue. And finding, having qualified teachers or teachers or people that work in there, it's been a struggle. I know you guys have been doing a great job there, so I think it's a great incentive for people. And it's funded through the state, so that's even better. It's not coming out of our pocket. Any questions or comments?
Yes, from reading over this just quick, like, it sounds like they're going to be submitting their time to the state of Minnesota so we won't have anything to do with funding on our end, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and does HR have any concerns for this program? No concerns? Okay. That's all I got.
Any other comments or?
Do you have an idea right now, I see accounting is here, Erin, roughly how many per month these additional checks will be so that they get a, you know, get an idea of how many, how much it adds to their already full schedule? Just a round, you know, do you have a round figure of anywhere from how many employees a month will receive a check?
I don't have any.
Is this a separate check or will it be additional to the actual payroll check?
I think it will be separate.
Okay.
Just so that we know they're getting what the state sends for them.
Sarah, when will this be implemented then, once it's approved here?
I think we would like to start it right away. It started already, and we would like to get it going for our staff.
Okay, Christine?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yeah, this is, like you said, Kathy, this is with the surplus of funds that are in the state. And so what they're trying to do is just to provide additional support to teachers and T trades because they're in the lower bracket of always being paid than everybody else. I believe what, how the process goes is that we submit their time to the state, and then the state will cut them individual checks. And they made sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah. You go.
No, I was going to say, so basically, they're not doing any additional work. They're just getting compensated for the work they're already doing.
Yes.
Are you able to add this to the job description or to your recruitment efforts? I think that would be, are you able to vocalize that or not?
The only thing, the only problem with that is that we don't know how long that we're going to be able to get these payments. So we don't want to put it in any of our, you know, paperwork because this is additional and there's no guarantee how long this will last.
Okay.
No other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the Minnesota Great Start Compensation Support Payment Program? Moved by Shane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Silent, motion carried. Good job, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Next we, yeah, next we have Randy Long, Sole Source Request to Whipley for Software Training for All Employees. Good morning, Randy.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to request Sole Source to Whipley Online Training for All Employees. I've researched a lot of online training classes, and this is really specific to governmental operations. It provides in-depth training for Office 365 applications. It provides HIPAA training for healthcare, but it's more than just a training program. What it does is directly integrates into our email system and helps prevent cybersecurity threats.
Oh.
The cost of this is a three-year term. We have acquired funding through BIA Cybersecurity Funding to pay for this over this three-year term. And I think it would be a good fit for the organization. It provides 24/7 access to all employees. If we see a strong engagement throughout this, this training application, we're going to try and extend it to the Fortune Bay staff as well.
You know, I think training is huge, especially in the area of cybersecurity because it's really coming. You keep hearing on, on the news and whatever about all these places getting hacked and personal information getting out. And to have access to 24/7 online training that actually can integrate with our email, that's even better. So, and the BIA Security will, cybersecurity program will cover that three-year term, so it's not any extra funding out of our pocket. Yes, Nikki?
Okay.
Pam?
Randy, I have a question. Is this real similar to MedTrainer, the learning management system?
It, it is similar, but it will not replace MedTrainer.
Okay.
This software application will give the directors the ability to sign specific training modules to their employees. It does have in-depth training modules or integration for HIPAA, but I don't see it replacing MedTrainer at this point.
Okay, that was my question, Randy, thank you.
You talked about, you know, eventually bringing it over to Fortune Bay for their employees. Will that be additional cost?
It will be an additional cost. I do feel we have adequate funding to cover that cost at this point or funding through our BIA funding for cybersecurity. I'd like to do a three-month rollout for Boysport to see how it's engaged first. And if it is accepted, I would definitely like to roll it out to Fortune Bay. Or if you think it's, would be tremendously beneficial for Fortune Bay, we can move forward with it immediately as well.
When will you start this, Randy, once it's approved?
Once it's approved, we'll probably by the end of next week. I would like to start rolling it out to the directors and showing them what's all involved.
Okay. Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the Sole Source Request to Whipley for Software Training for All Employees. Three, three-year total is $28,780.74, which comes out of the BIA Cybersecurity Grant. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Robert. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Travis, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, silent, motion carried.
Thank you.
Good job, Randy, thank you. And next we have George with Sehassen, Sehassen Musical Performance and Cultural Presentation. Morning, George.
Good morning. I hear. What I got for you is this, a contract for the Sehassen Band. They're a family group, and they like to do presentations of the cultural practices and also share some of their fry bread. They want to bring Navajo style fry bread up to the Northland here and invite community members to learn how to do that. So you'll actually get some bluebird flour along with this to make your, your fry bread. So that'll all be included in that. And also a musical performance. This band is international. They're just getting back from, I think they're up in China right, right?
Oh, my goodness.
And they'll be down in South America here pretty quick, so.
Nice.
Yeah, and so there's the price, and that's why I am here. And just looking for a signature.
Okay, and this will be in Vermillion?
Yeah, in Vermillion, it's part of KBFT's 13th anniversary. So we're adding more to this event, so.
Okay.
And it'll be more local flavor, you know, somebody from Boysport, one of our musicians. We're thinking of bringing back old Maurice Joseph or a reprise of his Sled Dog CD. So that, hopefully, that, that'll work.
Wonderful. Any questions for George?
I'm looking at letter C here, and it says that the payment is for $5,500 and zero cents.
Yeah. That's why I'm here. Council approval, anything over five, so.
Jeff, do you have any, any issues or concerns with this contract?
No, I took a look at it.
No, I took a look at it and gave a few, there's a few minor recommendations I made to George. One was just a kind of a typo and making sure that the scope of work is, is comprehensive so that, you know, the band gets what they, what they want out of the, the services. But this is a, a contract form that KBFT and George has used before and it's pretty comprehensive, so no concerns.
Okay. I look forward to this. This is exciting. Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
Move.
Moved by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shane. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post silent. Motion carried. Good job, George.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
I can attest to your Ma's fry bread, too.
Okay, next we have Daryl Newtonan and Erin Morrison from Accounting. Daryl is our new Contract Grants Manager for Accounting. Welcome, Daryl. And Erin.
I just kind of, come on, let me come sit with him. There was someone, because there are no Contracting Procurement Manager.
We have Resolution Number 69-2024, Delegation of Authority Procurement Contracts. Go ahead, Daryl. The floor is yours.
Yeah, good morning. Glad to be here. Been here just a little over a month, so this is my first project, so my first council meeting, so. So purpose of this is to, you know, propose this resolution to streamline the procurement process. And what that means is having the tribal council delegate some of this authority down to, down to lower levels. And if you look on the, on the second page, you can see the, the table there. It, it all starts with, at the lowest level would be at the Department Director or Department Head. And then it would go to the Executive Director and then finally to the council. So it's really based on, one is dollar value, but more importantly, it's based on risk, you know, how much risk there would be to the, to the band. And it's also based on, you know, a normal government procedures. And I can get into why we pick specific dollar values because of those procedures.
Yeah, if you could explain that, Daryl, why you picked the specific dollar values for the audience?
Sure. So if you look at the, on the far, far right, the Department Director or Department Head for Supplier Service Expenditure, we use $10,000. And $10,000 is the federal government micro purchase threshold. I'll try not to throw my, too many terms around here, but.
Okay.
What that really means is up to $10,000, anybody with the authority can go spend up to $10,000 without having to get any second sources. You can go straight to L&M, you can go straight to Amazon or, or whatever, and you can go make that purchase. So it's very low risk. It's just like you or I going out, you know, doing the same thing. So anything $10,000 or below, we feel that the authority could be delegated down to the department level. Then you get over $10,000, so anything greater than $10,000 and up to $250,000, there's a process called the Small Purchase Procedures. And what's required there is more than one quote. So we say multiple quotes, right? We, we like to say three or more, but we, more than one.
Okay.
And you don't have to get into any of the complex procedures with that. You go get three quotes. You pick the one that works for you. Typically, it's going to be the, the lowest dollar, but it might not be because there might be a lower dollar one, but you can't get it for six months when you need it now, right, type of thing. But you're, you're trying to determine the price reasonably. That's what competition does.
Okay.
So we use $50,000. Like I said, it could be anywhere between, you know, $10,000 and $1,000 up to $250,000 within that range. So appropriate for the Executive Director level. And then you can see anything over $50,000 would come to the council. As for Supplier Service, now construction's a different animal, right?
Yeah.
Construction has different rules. Oftentimes, an act called the Davis Bacon Act will apply depending on the grant, depending on, you know, where the funding is coming from. So that's why we limited Department Heads to up to $2,000, just because of the Davis Bacon Act being the requirement. And then up to, again, up to $50,000 at the Executive Director and then anything above 50 would be with the council.
Okay.
Any questions on, on those at all? And the last one we have on there is a ratification. I got here and I saw that we had some unauthorized purchases, i.e. they didn't go through the process of, you know, getting, submitting a requisition, getting a purchase order. And so I feel like we should have some sort of process to actually approve those because right now we're just kind of approving them with, with out prompt authorization.
Right.
In my, in my mind. So you can see that Department Heads would have no ratification authority. The Executive Director would have up to $10,000 and any purchase over $10,000 that was unauthorized purchase would have to be approved by the council.
Okay. Very good, Daryl. Questions?
Yes, um, I'm bored. Now, like when, as an example, try to make this crystal clear if I can. Now, when you take your car into a shop for repairs and they give you a quote, $5,000 to fix this, and they find more problems and it goes over the $5,000, what happens?
Yeah, what, what we're trying to do now is we're, we're making what I call open purchase orders. They'll have a not to exceed amount on it. So if, if you had a not to exceed $5,000, because initially they thought it would take $5,000, you'd have to come back and get additional approval, do the additional work.
So you would have to contact that vendor, whoever's working on it. If they contact her and say, man, this, I found something and it's going to be a lot more than what we thought, then you would tell them, well, wait, I got to get additional.
Yes, that, that purchase order would only be good for $5,000, not for $5,001.
Yep.
And if you look at number five, for the purposes of approval, expenditures required here under, RTC shall be deemed to have approved expenditure if it is identified in a budget approved on RTC. Now, if it's not in the budget, then basically the day they have to come back to us for approval for it, correct? Or is it, follow me, one of these guidelines where the Executive Director could approve it or?
Well, the way I see it is Department Heads, they're responsible for their budgets. So if they have a requirement, they're going to make sure they have the budget before they, you know, submit a requisition for whatever level of approval. So we have to rely on, on, on the Department Heads or Directors to know that they have the funding to make that purchase.
The reason why I bring that up is because I, I want to make this process crystal clear as possible because I don't want any hangups to happen and pretty soon it's like, oh, wait a minute, you couldn't approve that, but you did and then.
If it was outside of their, their dollar.
If it's not crystal clear, you know, like when they're trying to, to get their expenditures, you know, in the budget.
Right.
Okay. Try to make the process crystal clear as possible so everybody understands it, knows it, so that no hangups happen.
Right. I think that's a responsibility of the directors at the Department Heads, right? Manage their budget, propose their approval process within their budget.
Now, my final question with that is that, is that just basically in general speaking that you, you want this in place or is it per month per project? Like, you have a project for $100,000 and have another project asked for like $500,000. This is still the same?
Yeah. Every, every requirement is treated by, on, on itself.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's no, no stacking, you know, no, no splitting and all those types of things.
Any other questions or comments or? Yeah, that's okay, because I saw you were tackling your chair over there, Miranda. Okay, go ahead, Miranda.
The comment that Shane just had, I think not his last comp question, but the question before that where it states, so long as the, the budget is approved by council, these things can happen. What happens if council doesn't approve the budget? Because I don't think council has approved the budgets for fiscal year 2024 yet and here we are, six months in.
Yeah.
Yeah, folks are, they get their grant dollars and they develop their department budget, if you will. That's, I don't know the process of, of approving the overall budget.
So I think, that's enough with Miranda just said is that if it's written in the grant, that should reflect that in here rather than saying the budget because like you said, we, we don't, we don't have the budget yet.
Yeah, because that, if that's a resolution, like we must follow that and if it says the budget needs to be approved by council before we can, you know, make these purchases, we're sitting here with no grant, right, or no budget approved right now. And so we're not able to make any purchases, you know, months into the fiscal year.
I don't think in our proposed resolution here, we're asking for that, to have the budget approved prior. I guess that would be, I think, for me, I think that's a separate, separate issue to.
Oh, and I thought that's what the resolution said, that.
Oh, it's on the, it's on, it's not on the resolution, but it's in the Exhibit A.
Oh, okay.
Jeff, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to make a quick, a quick clarification, just in response to, to Miranda's comment, just so there's a kind of an understanding of what that number five about budgets is intended to, to get at.
Yeah.
So the, the idea is that, you know, if a department or a director has a grant budget or a departmental budget and it identifies, you know, a specific expenditure, let's say for HR, you know, Miranda plans to do a training and she identifies that in a, in a budget line item, a specific training throughout the fiscal year, council approves that, there wouldn't then be a need under this policy to come back to council or to come back to some approving authority to get that approved a second time. So what that number five is essentially getting at is if, if council's already looked at it and approved a specific purchase, then you don't need to come back and get a second approval. If however, there is no approved budget and, and, you know, the tribal government doesn't get around to approving budgets for a particular year, that doesn't mean that departments can't spend funds. It just means they have to come back and get the approval authority under this table, however, you know, wherever it falls. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense, Jeff, but technically I don't even remember and help me, help me out here, of the council approving any budgets. The departments work their budgets and I think years ago, budgets were approved, but like Miranda said, there are some programs that don't have an approved budget right now. So there's a hand up, I see. I don't know who it is, though.
But I see that, that interpretation too, though, with regards to RTC shall be deemed to have approved an expenditure if it is identified in a budget, which would then be approved by the RTC.
Yes, Kim.
Oh, Kim, go ahead.
Okay, that, that was for like grant specific budget, so like the CTAS grant that DNR had recently got. And they specifically listed the, specifically listed the equipment they had to get.
Okay.
And the council had to approve that budget to get that grant. That's what that's addressing.
Okay. Do you think we should word that differently in that Exhibit A then? I mean, the, the, the resolution refers to Exhibit A, but Exhibit A is where it's listed as that, so should that be more specified in there? Jeff or Kim?
Yeah, I'm not available to look at the paperwork itself, but maybe Jeff and Gerald can put in on.
Okay. Sure.
Take a look at that.
Okay.
Clear that up.
Okay.
I think that this is, this is a good procedure that you're setting up. Needs tweaking.
Yeah. Just needs that little fix on the budget part.
We'll make those changes and then we'll come back.
Yep.
Just there.
I got a couple.
Sorry, questions?
Just a couple of things, just housekeeping ones on here. You're referencing council and you. C I L. And then on your matrix here, it says expenditures type and value, chairperson slash tribal coun, again, council. Entire tribal council, no, officially tribal council. Because I read that as chairperson and/or tribal council, that you could go to the entire tribal council or you could go to the chair.
Interpreted that way, yeah.
What are you, what are you looking at, Tara?
On your little matrix here, see how it, right there?
This is Kim, this is Kim, the, that was a draft and we worked on it since the agenda deadline.
This is the new one.
I don't know. Yeah. There should have been a new one that came.
Yeah, we got a new one handed to us, Kim.
Yeah. We, because I know the council spelling was there and we.
The matrix needs to be correct.
Yep. And the matrix was way smaller and the titles were different.
Sorry, Tara. I think you're looking at an older version. So in the new version, we did, we did correct those.
Okay.
The new version was the one I handed out to.
Yeah, we got it. But there's no matrix on it.
Oh, there is.
There is.
Pardon?
That should be reflected in the minutes, which one we're approving.
Ah, the corrected one that was handed out.
Days on it?
Pardon?
It was just this morning that I had the final version.
That's okay.
Well, we got to come back anyway and correct this five, right?
Yeah, we got to, we got to correct one.
Before you.
Okay, so we'll table it for now and then if you want to bring it back in a couple weeks with that correction, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion to table this while they fix?
One thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Robert, go ahead.
Is there a definition to, like, say somebody spends $5,000 on, you know, something needed a director head? What is the process for them reporting it next to the Executive Director or to the tribal council? Is there a timeline or, you know, or is it just set in stone that it's over and done with there, you know? You know, it's like. I know you can't, you know, we can, say we can spend $5,000 to a director, say for a quick car fix. How, how much time before they have to report that to their superiors or that chain of men? I mean, do they have to report it?
Report it.
To their boss, to the executive director, you know, like.
Should be getting approved when they're submitting it.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, I, you know, I don't know exactly. But yeah, I was just, you know, like, say, say if we needed something, you know, and we needed a plow part and it's $5,000 and this director can go up and just buy it.
Just order first. The purchase order process, that's where it goes.
Something in the requisition.
No, that'll be the approval version and purchase order. But then in a.
The little, yeah.
That's okay. That's all right.
Yeah, nothing major, I didn't.
I have a question, Daryl. For Executive Director, can you put somewhere in there that I have to report large expenditures to the council during RTG meetings, just in case if they have any questions with anything from $10,000, $1,050, I can.
Oh.
Any questions in the public meeting?
Good idea.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
I said, for myself, if there is a purchase of $23,000 or anything from $10,000, $1,000 to $50,000, can we put something in this resolution to say the Executive Director must report a large expenditure report to the council?
Oh.
During the RTG meetings, just in case if there are questions, if the public has any questions on anything that was spent in between that amount.
Yeah, we did talk about that as a group, maybe, maybe monthly having a list of, of purchases that were made. And I don't know if there's a certain dollar value we want to do that at, but maybe anything over $10,000 or something.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, good discussion.
I don't know.
Excuse me.
That from before, Kim.
Kim, is your hand still up?
Um, I just didn't put it down, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Tara?
And please take note that I can see that this would work in construction projects and, and grant funding. I want to make sure that in our indirect cost pool funding and allocations from Fortune Bay, that this doesn't get abused in that way, like there's a never-ending pot in the indirect cost pool. You know what I mean? Because we don't have an approved budget, sometimes projects or directors or whomever will just send it to, send it to the program managers, accounting. Do we have enough funding in the, in here? Because it's indirect cost and allocation from Fortune Bay, it's almost treated as a never-ending pot of money. And, and I want to make sure that. And, and I want to make sure that we aren't doing that. You know, with a grant, there's a set amount. Indirect cost pool and funding from Fortune Bay, that's almost viewed different, you know. So I want to make sure that there's a distinction with that. That things that are paid under indirect costs don't. Just under $9,999, you know. Paid so it doesn't come up to me, it's come up to me after the fact, you know. And you spend up, and somebody spends up our indirect costs.
Just as an FYI too for Tara and Robert, because usually the council does approve a Fortune Bay distribution budget, but we haven't since you guys have been on. So just as an FYI, that, that is an approved budget. So those line items should be actually in that Fortune Bay distribution budget that's approved by the council, just as an FYI. Cause right now, we haven't been doing that. So FYI. Okay, good, good conversation. Do we have a motion to table this until they get those couple of things added to Exhibit A and then bring it back?
Thank you.
Move.
Moved by Travis, second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Silent, motion carried. Next, we have Nikki Irving with Pingboard Inc., organizational.
Over there.
Well, you can sit there, software. Go ahead, Nick, we won't make you seatop.
Okay, this is just an agreement that I come up with. We, Regina and I were looking at trying to recreate or redo the org chart. But with some of the stuff that we're limited to, it doesn't come really very easily. And with all the changes, you know, with employees and whatnot, it gets very frustrating for one person to really create this or keep it updated. So what this is, it's an agreement for one year. We're just gonna go with the basic plan, which is 1430, 40 a year. It comes with 20 licenses. It's very easy to update, whether it's just a simple file that we use. We can have, you know, all the supervisors update their information as needed. And it just gets uploaded into this website per se. And it, it's a very nice program, I thought. I've been looking at a couple of different things on how to do this and whatnot. You know, you keep it updated on the spot. You can put all kinds of information under the employee's name there, whether it's their phone number, email, you know, their location, where they work, their pictures. You know, all of that stuff. They can put a bio in there if they want. So there's all kinds of stuff they can do in there. At one point, I know that, you know, the accompanying jar are looking. Whether they go with somebody who has the org chart in there or not, depending on who they choose, you can even gather that information from that HR program and just upload it that way. So it gets updated as new people are, you know, coming in or as people are leaving, that sort of thing. So it just kind of makes things simpler. In the past couple of months, we have had a couple of people asking for the org chart. Was 2017. Sorry. So it's just, it's just more simp-, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's simpler, easier to upload, get that information out. You know, people can update it as, as needed right now. And then if at some point, you know, if they do have a software that has your chart, we can, we can just drop it and, and whatnot. Cause I don't know how soon they'll be looking at getting this new software. But at least it's something that, you know, the directors, if they need it, they can go in there and get the org chart that they need.
I think this would be actually helpful for council cause sometimes we get calls and we don't know a specific org chart for a department. You know, like who's in charge if, if you can't get ahold of the director or who's next in line or whatever, because that would be helpful. Cause I don't know the org start, org chart structure for all, all the programs. We know the directors, but after that, it's like.
Yeah, and it's, this is something too, we can have on the website. So, you know, any person can go in and look at it and, you know, just to see who's there or whatnot.
Yeah. Do you know where this will be paid out of, Nikki?
RTC. It would have come from RTC.
Any questions for Nikki?
Yes, I'm looking at number 17. This is for Jeff, if he's still on, is he still on?
Yeah.
It says here, under number 17, it's regarding disputes. And I always have questions when we get in these kinds of contracts and stuff. Exclusive jurisdiction and venue of any action arising out of or related to such an action will be either the state or federal courts in Travis County, Texas. And the parties agree not to dispute the personal exclusive jurisdiction or venue of these courts. The parties agree that nothing herein shall be deemed a waiver of subscriber's sovereign immunity. Do you have any issues with that, Jeff?
No, I think it's all right, Shane. And actually, when Nikki initially sent me this, that was a provision, like I always do, that I honed in on. And we requested the last sentence be added. So the parties agree that nothing herein shall be deemed a waiver of the subscriber's sovereign immunity. That's a confirmation that, that dispute resolution clause doesn't waive sovereign immunity in the event that the band were to be sued. So in light of that, we requested that specific language to protect the band's interests. And I don't have any concerns, given that last sentence that they did agree to add.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we, oh, Miranda? Easier getting out of your chair that time.
It was. Couple of comments I have. Number one, I have a concern with supervisors, managers, directors being able to go in and make these changes on their own. The reason I have that concern is because in HR, we are the official record keeper of every employee's employment. And we already have trouble with them notifying us of changes. So if they're gonna make a change to an employee's employment status and they go onto this, whatever it is, that might further hinder the conversation with HR regarding employee employment status. The other concern I have is if they make changes here, like I said, if they make changes here to, or to this, what is it, like a soft, online software or something? We have, we have to make sure that those are recorded. And so I would really hate for changes to be made, things to go on. And again, HR is not informed. The other comment I would like to make is I get very few questions for org, org charts. Nobody ever asks for them. I search my email, I don't get many responses for, or requests for the org charts. So I would have appreciated discussing this with me before bringing it to council. Nikki is correct. We are looking at software, so hopefully this will be part of the software. But, you know, if council approves this, I would like to sit down with Nikki and have some discussions and have some limitations on changes that can be made to this without notifying human resources or human resources okaying the changes or some, you know, something like that.
Okay, and I think what, what I was talking about was basically like a delegation of authority. But, you know, I mean, like, if I'm in my, like, like Miranda, for example, I'll use your department. Like if I am absent, then who's the next in delegation of authority? Now, they don't report that to you, do they, the delegation of?
No, no, they don't.
But I can understand that the working together part.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Totally work it out that way.
Yeah.
How we need to.
So if you and, and HR can get together, okay? Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Miranda.
You know, just, just to clarify, you know, for the dispute part of it is that it bugs me when, when you get these kind of contracts telling us what we can't, can't do as a tribe. We have to go to Travis County, Texas if we want to dispute something. And, and it's problematic. I just want to point that out, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement with Pingboard in the amount of $1,430.40 for org chart software?
Do you think we should wait until HR and Nikki get them to get together?
Go ahead. I'd like to approve pending coordination with HR and any other.
Okay.
Department.
Yes. Tara's making a motion to approve pending the coordination between HR and our executive secretaries or whoever's in charge of this Pingboard, so.
Second.
Second by Shane, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Good job, thank you.
Greatly needed if it's 2017, then it's.
That's a long time ago.
Sorry, my face did that, Nikki.
Lance Hill is next. And we have resolution number 70-2024, cancellation of residential lease and issuance of recreational lease to Chelsea Winans. Did I say that right? Winans, Winans, thank you.
Morning.
Lance.
Okay, so, so we need, so Chelsea Winans, she currently has a USDA residential lease. There, um, at some point when I, in the past half a year, I recognized the typo in the land, legal land description. So the, in order to correct that, I had to have discussion with her because what they got her originally listed as is, is the lease next to her.
Oh.
So with that in place, it's affecting the lease next to it. Because the individual band member wants to operate and build a home. But, but the BIA is saying, well, technically, this is her lease. So we had to correct one. Now, as we had discussions, since her USDA lease was approved, you know, for, I do not know the reason, reasoning, but her circumstances have changed. The USDA lease, I believe it's more geared towards low income homeowners throughout, throughout the area. I don't know if it's, if it's for all members. I have to believe it's for everyone. Well, anyway, she no longer meets those requirements. Now she does have, so she's unable to acquire a USDA lease. The, her living situation has since changed too. And she is, her family, young family has purchased a home elsewhere. I don't have the details there. So they were hoping to, or after discussion with legal counsel, my supervisor and whatnot, the easiest path forward to free up the lease next to hers and also to allow her chances, I guess you can call it success, would be to, in one resolution, cancel the USDA lease, at the same time, issue a recreational lease. The, the reason why we're switching to a recreational lease is it provides a little more flexibility. The, it's more of a lender limitation. Since, I'm not sure exactly when, but the, I would have to say the housing crisis. Lenders have become a little more reluctant to offer up their, offer up their money or offer a loan on trust land, being that they're not, their ownership of the land remains with the band. So they want to protect their interests. That would be my best guess.
Okay.
So this resolution, is that 70?
Yep, 70-2024.
That's just for my notes. But yeah, so this one is asking for cancellation of the residential USDA lease and also the issuance of a new one with the new legal description that.
Okay.
The correct.
Gives her the correct lot.
And then that would free up the residential lease next to her as well.
Any questions for Lance? That was complicated.
Lot of movement, pardon.
Yeah, I, I agree. If no questions, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 70-2024, cancellation of residential lease and issuance of recreational lease to Chelsea Winans?
Both.
Moved by Tara, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Travis, all in favor signify by saying aye. Posed, silent, motion carried. Good job on that, Lance.
Thank you, Lance.
Thank you.
Just a quick note on signage and paperwork. Please correct 2023 to 2024 on all the paperwork.
Is that the resolution itself, Tara?
The resolution, the lease.
Okay.
Everything that we sign.
Thanks, Lance, good job.
Thank you.
Next, we have Miranda Lilia with the educational incentive policy. Good morning.
So what you have before you is the educational incentive policy that was, originally, it was included into the personnel policy revision. After discussions with council, senior management, it became aware that we needed to get this, presented to council prior to the full personnel policy revision. So originally, after, after we realized how important it was, we brought it to senior management, I'm sorry, we brought it to the personnel policy revision committee. Those in attendance at that meeting put in some revisions. We put those into place. We sent it to senior management. We've had discussions with the executive director, council. Now with the executive meeting, we've discussed it there between Luke, the executive director, Randy Long, the IT director, Kim, the chief financial officer, Dan Rabidu, the chief executive officer, and myself. We've also had, Jeff and I have sent this back numerous times. Finally, what you have before you is what is presented to council for approval. You have any questions?
It looks like you added that the employees will complete an educational plan.
Yes, so we've added, the latest additions were that they would complete an educational plan to their supervisor, director prior to pursuing additional education or training. For those currently in, seeking higher education, they would do it within 30 days of effective, the effective date of this policy. There is, I think, I don't know if we've fully titled it, but there is like an education committee maybe, which is the executive director, the chief financial officer, and myself. We will review the educational plans. And the last form that you have in your packet there, that's what the employee would complete and then add some of their educational classes and things like that. There was a, a real high, what do I want to say this? There was a comment that these educational incentive payments should be guaranteed. We've always, with all of our policies and things, we've always said, you know, if funds are available. So when the employee fills out the form and attaches their educational plan, their classes, things like that, once it's reviewed by that education committee, the funds would be set aside at that time. I hesitate to say the payment is guaranteed because, you know, it's always, it's always been funding available. But if the employee does this, we would set the funds aside.
When you say, I have a question. When you say we will set the funds aside, is that departmentally? Is that RTC will set the funds aside or how, what, what are we talking about?
It's not spelled out in here, but we had discussions that the program would be the first payer. If they did not have the funds, it would have to be RTC funds, tribal funds.
Okay. Got it.
Jeff has his hand up.
Oh, Jeff, uh-oh. Gonna send it back, Jeff? No, just kidding.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, 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 no. I just had a quick comment. I, I don't know if I'm looking at the same one in the packet as council, but I just wanted to note that the, the version I'm looking at has a Section G at the bottom.
Yes.
That is, that I had recommended be deleted just because up top, it talks about the educational plan being submitted prior to pursuing the education. And then G talks about during the last year. So assuming Miranda agrees that it should be prior and that council's on board with that, if you do adopt this today, I would recommend adopting it with striking Section G, just to clarify.
Okay, striking Section G. Okay.
And I did try to correct the RTC agenda. And I had submitted the policy without G. So if you have G on there.
Yeah, G. Take it off.
There was a later, I don't fully understand document, I'm sorry.
Hey, that's okay. Any questions for Miranda?
Yes, you're looking at the, the total lump sum payments. Okay, you've got the high school diploma, GED, license or certificate, which is $1,000. ASR, A or equivalent degree of $2,000, bachelor's $4,000, graduate $6,000, PhD or doctorate $7,000. Now, what happens if we don't have it?
That is why I'm hesitant to put this payment will be guaranteed. If we put in here that the payment is guaranteed, it's guaranteed. If we don't have it, I guess that's a Kim question?
Now, are we taking the money out of the same pot of money? Or is it coming from the department?
It would come from the department first. And if the, if the department doesn't have the money, then it would be RTC funds.
Do we have it?
I think one thing that I think we need to look at, because here's an example. The Fortune Bay funds we've used for various programs and services. But since COVID, we haven't really reorganized those to the needs that other funding may have covered already. You know what I mean? There may be some funds in the Fortune Bay funds that a grant or something else might be covering. So I think we need to look at that. The other thing is the, we do have that aid to tribal government funding coming in. I believe it's March, April, May, June. It's coming this, this summer that is from the state. And that's based on that formula of where the tribes can go in, opt to go in or not. And then it's distributed, distributed equally and no restrictions on it. So in that part, there could be a funding set aside for education, a percentage of that. I mean, that, that fund has yet to be budgeted out because we don't know what it is. And so that, that would be, I think, because I really feel that we need incentives and for education, but also for recruiting people to come work here. Because of our location and driving and what have you, that, you know, we really need to look at workforce recruitment and retention. Let me say retention as well, because we've lost a lot of people to outside agencies as well. So I think that's something organizationally, and even with Fortune Bay, that we need to start looking at. So, but that's just kind of a quick answer.
So then my other question is, is that somebody who was currently working on getting their degree or whatever, or their high school diploma, GED, is able to get this money as opposed to someone who already has a degree or their diploma? They can't say, hey, I got my diploma, where's my money?
So we have, we originally recommend, or we were recommending to go retroactive to, I think it was 2020. We had a retroactive date a few years back. But we've changed it based on discussions with council to the effective date. So from that date forward, they would be eligible.
So the effective date is what, Miranda? Because we approved that in the consent agenda. This isn't a, this is kind of a change to that original.
No, we avoided the.
Oh, we avoided that one. Okay, so this would be today then, or whenever we want it effective?
Yes. Did that answer your question, Shane? I feel like you didn't. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What you, you want us to have the date?
I would recommend any day you guys would like to be effective.
Nikki?
I don't know if you said this or not, but does this, is it, or was it set in here? I don't remember if I saw it or imagining it. But it pertains only if it's job-related, right?
Yes, it must be job-related. And I think this is an important comment to make. If a person is hired in a position that requires, and now it says this in the job description, the minimum mandatory qualifications. If it says bachelor's degree in there, that that's a minimum mandatory qualification. It doesn't have that comment that says experience may be substituted in lieu of education. The minimum mandatory requirement is a bachelor's degree. And a current employee gets a bachelor's degree, they will not be eligible for this educational incentive.
Because they should have it right from the start.
Yes.
Okay.
So that is a very important piece of information, I think, we need, you know, to get out there.
So it also include like, like when I worked for housing, you know, I had to get the certifications for like water heaters and furnaces. That's a requirement, so that I wouldn't, that person wouldn't be able to access this because it's required.
No. We do have some job descriptions, however, that a person can graduate up to a higher grade based on getting those trainings and certifications. But it's built in that they would get an increase in the job description. So, you know, we do have maintenance technicians, we do have head start positions. We have a number of positions where it's written in the job description that they would, you know, increase in the grade, you know. They would not be eligible for these educational incentives.
Now, getting back to another point that I know who raised it, but recruiting, like this should be a good means as to recruiting people to come here to work for Boys' War. How long you think we could make this available?
As long as the money tree's out there, I guess. I don't know. As long as there's funding. I mean, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a good question, but an unknown answer. Because, you know, as long as the funding's available, right? Right, right.
That, that's why I asked it for it to go to the programs first and see if it's eligible under the grants first. Spend somebody else's money first before you go to the tribal, tribal funds. Which begs the question, is Kim still on? Been trying to find this out. When was the last approved budget? Kathy, you said maybe two years ago or well over.
The Fortune Bay one.
Before we even, the Fortune Bay allocation. So I'd like to really get down to, we need to get busy knowing where we're at. This shuffling around is making me nervous, really nervous. It's practically an open checkbook type of deal. And it's, it's causing me some, you know, I'm trying to get here and there and trying to find all this information. And it feels like I'm getting spun in circles. We need to get this done. We need to get our audits done. We need to get up to date. Opened our doors immediately after I got on. You know, so we can't be blaming COVID anymore. We need to get this done, making decisions based on that funding.
Yep. Is Kim still on? No, okay.
I agree with Tara.
Yep. Okay, let's do a motion to approve the educational incentive policy, striking Section G. And do we have that motion?
Need to add a date, in effective date?
Oh, yeah, effective, starting today. Effective today. For what? For three.
I'll move.
Moved by Shane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, silent, motion carried. Good job. Thank you.
Striking on that one.
Yep. Okay, I don't see any other business, so I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn at 10:42 AM. Regina? I always forget the time. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Shane. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara. All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed, silent, motion carried. McGwich, thank you all for attending today. Have a good day. Spring is on its way, no more snow, I hope. So, I didn't jinx us, but have a good day and thank you all for attending.